Oh, bring this session up county council order. I'll rise for the national anthem.
(inaudible).
(inaudible) in the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Yeah, I don't think you want to hear me sing the national anthem. I'm really good in the shower, but that's going somewhere we don't need to go.
Selfie well, won't selfie?
Pass.
Pass.
Now, you can sing, can't you?
Yeah.
Okay. This session is to, it's a special session to discuss the consideration of preliminary resolution for tax abatement for the wind farm, budget transfers, and salary 144s. The first thing we'll go through is some of the 144s that we have here. We have two of them here for the surveyor's office, one for a full-time secretary, and then one for the coroner's perpetuation. Not the coroner, but the coroner's perpetuation for technician and a laborer. Evening. As you know, John Valentine is retiring in the year in the year I've hired as presently a jail officer. Been there 15 years, Gina Gamble. And Debbie's office, her salary would be $25,790. So, the other one for the coroner's perpetuation is a change from previous years, I guess. I guess Debbie will know why that's, or some request to change it from.
Well, it was then clear on the 144 what that was actually for. So, it wasn't included in the salary ordinance. We crossed that out. So, now we need to just add it back in after you explain what it was for.
Okay, well, before they just had a part-time technician to locate section corners and witness them and make sure everything's okay, that everything's destroyed. Sometimes they'd be out in the center of the county road and we'd want to have a laborer flagging traffic at the same time, so, or help do. So, that's why that's the 144s. And coroner's perpetuation instead of the surveyor's budget for this thing.
I have seven separate files.
It's paid out there, I guess. Any questions for Mr. Suton?
I would only thank Warren for clearing that up. Part of this, we weren't sure of last meeting. We've got two, well, one includes the coroner's perpetuation and the help for both, right?
Right.
Okay. I move we approve both requests of 144s for the county surveyor's office.
They have a motion to approve the 144 for the coroner's perpetuation and the surveyor full-time secretary, seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next would be the prosecutor, 144s. Prosecutor Ford D. and prosecutor, deputy prosecutor, administrative assistant.
Good evening. Thank you for having me this evening. As everyone knows, Paul Fried is moving upstairs into the elected position that he obtained in Superior Court. And I have chosen the deputy to take his place. We'll be hiring Gilda Kavanis. She is a longtime defense attorney here and also in a private practice and has run her own business successfully for many years. And we find her always being very professional and we're very happy, she was my first choice, so we're very happy that she's agreed to come on board. The position is funded from, currently funded from three different sources. One is a stop grant, one is 4D funds, and one is the county general line that we have, our county gen, our fund that comes from county general. The 4D is, of course, from incentive money and is a reimbursable expenditure because of it being tied to the 4D work. The stop grant over the last 12 years has decreased by, I think we estimated between 8,000 and 9,000 over the last 12 years. That's how long I've been with the office, so I have personal knowledge of that. And it's, over the years, has decreased the salary for that pay because I don't know if the grant funds are just running out of money or if they're just finding different places to put it, or why we're not meeting the criteria to get the amounts that we used to get. But it's down significantly. So, in order to hire a person, I am proposing to make up for that balance by putting part of it out of the 4D and part of it out of county general and as of many, or what is our part of county general. But what many of you probably recall is that these salaries are also paid by us moving our diversion money to cover much of that. So, fortunately, we get to be one of the offices that gets to be more self-sustaining than others, and we try to be wherever we can. The administrative assistance position is the same in terms of coming from the two spots, not from the stop grant, but from 4D and general. And we have chosen, what's happening, this is not election-related, but Mrs. Nobby has decided, Mrs. Nobby has decided to go home and be a full-time mom again. So, she asked me to find a replacement, and I did. I found Sharon Ling, who currently works at the auditor's office and has served in that position for many years. And with the help of the ordinance on salaries and Debbie, we decided that what her salary would be according to that ordinance and split it down the middle between the two funds. We also are hopeful, my intention is to keep Mrs. Nobby on for a couple of weeks for training purposes. And because Megan's salary, Mrs. Nobby's salary was at the, closer to the starting pay because she doesn't have the years of experience with the county that Mrs. Ling does, then we'll have to go back and put more money into that, do an additional at a later time. And I will include the portion that we need, that we end up having to pay Mrs. Nobby in the additional and do it all at once to cover, to cover that and fix that in our lines. The increased salary that I've split between the two, I think, comes out to 10.5. This position's not had, back to the deputy prosecutor's position, this position's not had any raise and in fact has gone down because of the grant.
Any motion, Mike?
Yes.
I make a motion.
They have a motion to approve the 144s for the prosecutor's office. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? The motion is seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Debbie, you're getting a good assistant there, Sharon, so.
We're pretty excited about it.
Take care of her.
We will. Don't you worry. Don't you worry. Thank you so much. You all have a wonderful holiday season.
We, what are we going to do with this?
That was part-time salary.
Okay, the part-time salary, we talked about it in our budget, that we were going to give everybody in the county a pay raises here. Last year, we didn't do the part-time. This year, we were going to include the part-time and the full-time. And for whatever reason, the part-time got overlooked, got not put in their bags yet. Is that correct? Is that a fair statement?
I didn't, that was not on my radar, so I did not, you and Dale thought that it was, but I was listening for a monetary amount to go with it because we would have had to make it down to X number, how much per hour. So, that wasn't. But the 500 raise that was given to the full-time salary people would equate to 24 cents an hour if you wanted to pass that on to part-time also.
So, that's what we're doing. That's what we're proposing we do because we, that's what we said we were going to do in the budget meeting. So, we would just be adjusting those part-time salary numbers here instead of redoing a whole new budget. Correct?
Yeah, yeah. Rather than signing a whole new resolution that isn't even in effect yet, so we could just go into that one and adjust those if you were to vote to do that. We'll adjust those 144s.
Okay. Clear as mud?
So, we'll call this an amendment to the salary ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, it was my memory as well as I think yours, Mike, and I think Shirley agreed. We had this discussion during budget hearings.
I do have it in my notes as well, too.
And it was the consensus that we're going to do this for our full-time part-timers. Somehow or another, it fell through the cracks, through all the stuff we do.
Here is another thing, and I don't know how you want to do that because you did adjust, how long ago was that? You did adjust community corrections, part-time salaries.
Yes.
But they also, they also got the $500 raise, the full-time people did, so I guess it would be across the board.
Mm-hmm. Across the board. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make one. I want to make sure I worded this correctly. I move to amend our 2015 salary ordinance to reflect an increase in the hourly wage of our part-time employees not to exceed a total of $500 per year, which I think we figured that'd come out to 24 cents an hour.
Yeah, that's what the highway received, 24 cents.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion on the floor to amend the 2015 salary ordinance to reflect the 20, not more than 24 cents an hour pay raise or $500 total for all part-time positions in Fayette County. Any further discussion?
Yes. There was a meeting, a special meeting of the community corrections to approve the grant request for this year. You may recall that their fiscal year begins on July the 1st and ends on June the 30th. And there was some confusion, I think, last time based on whether or not they should or should not be a part of the county general increases because they in fact are, their salaries are paid not from county general but from the grant funding. They have been working on, and I think we've had several discussions in the meetings at the budget hearings and again on the meetings, but the state of Indiana code indicates that their advisory board sets the salary structure for the community corrections. And they made a proposal to the board on Monday's meeting that went along with the numbers that they sent in on the grant request. Of course, that will be some time before that's approved, and that will be for their fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2015. And a portion, and of course, that has not been approved yet, but the salary structure was approved by the advisory board. And I'd like to read the last sentence in that. It's about a lot of the different things, and again, it follows the Indiana code on how it's set. But it says, "This schedule shall be reviewed, updated, and approved by the advisory board every two years. Employees of Fayette County Community Corrections shall be exempt from salary increases/b bonuses paid to other county employees being paid from county general. Salaries for the SCCC, Fayette County Community Corrections, are self-sustaining through project income." So, I think that statement, I'm not sure quite if I understand because I believe some of their salaries are from the grant money, pay some of the salaries. But the increased salary that they are proposing is paid for through the project income, the people, the, that they pay the fees for, for the ones that they supervise. So, it is their intent not to be part of that, and of course, they did receive a bonus from the state of Indiana.
Which they weren't included in, and we haven't talked about that yet, but they weren't included in this year's bonus because we amended the salary ordinance to exclude them.
Right.
Because they did receive, already received.
You got a bonus, didn't you?
Performance bonus from the state, so.
Which the employees don't get.
Right.
So, there's, that salary schedule was approved based on them not, them, number one, being independent and receiving the money from the services they provide, but also not being a part of the county general.
Well, and county general, these are paid, these raises are from, are for, from a lot of different funds, not just county general.
Well.
Yeah.
So, what are you saying?
So, you want them to be independent from the salary structure that courthouse and highway, and of course, the highway is governed by the union.
They are intending?
The courthouse employees.
It's their intent to bring this to council, but based on the fact that their budget doesn't start until July the 1st?
Right.
So, it was their intent because they had the other bonuses, and I think that they spoke to that when they asked for the approval to give that out, to be exempt from the other bonuses.
And they knew that, where.
So.
I think, so you're basically, you're saying they should be, they should not be included in this, which is, I think, is, is that what you're saying?
I think that is their intent. That was their intent.
Okay, and I agree because we, the rest of the employees are entitled to the bonus that they receive for performance.
Correct.
So, I would agree with that.
And again, it's their intent to come and ask that to the council and that they know that it will be something studied by the wage and salary committee. But again, it's, this is for beginning July the 1st, so they have some time to do that.
I thought the bonus incentive specifically excluded community corrections.
Yeah.
It did.
But the question is, will community corrections be included in the 24 cent an hour raise that Dale?
No.
So, now we're going to exclude them.
Right.
So, do we need to amend Dale's motion?
Well, in the original.
Excludes, should I say excluding community corrections?
I could add the words excluding community corrections.
Okay.
It's obvious by law, we can't let these two overlap.
Well, there are, there are two different, two different codes in conflict with one another as far as community corrections. One code says that they will be set by the advisory board, and then another code says that they are county employees. So, that, I mean, that dates back, the first day I started doing community corrections grant work 17 years ago, that, there's always been a conflict with those two codes, so. That's going to be resolved and, you know.
In the budget, the full-time bonus excluded community corrections.
Right.
We made an amendment to the salary ordinance when, when community corrections performance bonuses came through.
So, he could just amend his motion to be consistent with the full-time workers excluded, part-time community corrections employees.
Are you guys getting all this because there's going to be quizzes?
There is. I won't want you to have cheat sheets.
Okay. I'll amend my motion to exclude the community corrections employees from this adjustment in the 2015 salary ordinance. It's under consideration right now.
They have a motion on the floor to amend the 2015 salary ordinance to include all Fayette County employees with the exception of commu, oh, community corrections, 24 cents an hour not to exceed $500 total for the year. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay. Also during last year's budget, we talked about incentive to try and get some of the, to save some money in the different departments, we talked about a $500 bonus. And we wouldn't be able to find that out until kind of the year end, and Dale and Debbie have sat down, looked at the numbers, and the employees will qualify for that, both full and part-time, for the $500 bonus that we talked about, payable on the 19th. In order for that to happen, we have to do a transfer request out of the COET, and the amount requested is $80,000.
And I don't believe we'd need all of that, but I think it'll fall somewhere around $65,000 or less after Kathy recalculated everything yet this afternoon. But that money, as is noted, we paid December's health insurance, so there's money to do that transfer plus there is cash in the fund of almost $390,000.
Is there a motion to approve this transfer?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
They have a motion and second to approve the transfer of the COET fund in the amount of $80,000 to cover the employee bonuses for the 2014 salary, for the 2014 salary ordinance. Is there any further discussion?
Got one question. I want to get it clear in my mind. Debbie, how many, how many total employees did we finally decide? I think it was 102.
There was 102 in county general, and then you would have, you would have help and highway and what other budgets were paid. Reassessment fund, I don't know what we ended up, and the permanent part-time got the full amount. And then people who started at mid-year, it was prorated based on how, on how much they had worked in a year, so.
Yeah. That spelled out in the language in this letter that went out, Shirley wrote. Okay. I had that, that 102 figure stuck in my mind, and that was straight to county general when we picked up Health, Highway, and.
Reassessment.
Reassessment, all, and the full-time part-timers and that's, that.
That kicks that number up a bit.
Yeah, kicks it to probably over 200.
Yeah.
No further questions from any.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. I'd like to thank all the employees in Fayette County for trying so hard to save money over the past year. Though you're getting a $500 bonus, I think we all know that's not a whole lot, but it's a little something. I guess it's better than a swift kick in the teeth. But we appreciate your efforts. We appreciate all you've been doing to help us get to this point. It's not easy as a council to try and determine where we can cut costs, and so with your help, we're able to get to this point. So, we appreciate your efforts and your work. Thank you. Now, was there anything else that we had to talk about tonight? Just spitballing here.
We could talk about the highway and the garage, couldn't we, Mike? No. Just kidding.
Well, we're here to, I guess, vote on the preliminary economically vitalization area resolution. Does this have a number?
14-r-63.
14-r-63?
Uh-huh.
This is the same agreement that we entered into, we approved back in December, I think, early December, November. It is version five, which just basically changes the date in there from the lab, from the initial one. Is there any discussion among the council on this, or?
We're just redoing, starting the whole process over again that we started a couple months ago.
Yeah, this is the first step in what we did a couple of months ago to get the public hearing on the calendar for tentative of January 6th. So, you want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve resolution number 14-r-63.
Okay, we have a motion to approve resolution 14-r-63. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Now, we'll do roll call vote.
Councilman Wenter?
Yes.
Councilman Strong?
Yes.
Councilman Wolf?
Yes.
Councilman Sidell Zepson? Councilwoman Wise?
Abstain.
Councilman Blum?
Yes.
And Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
The ayes have it. Motion carries. Is there anybody from one of our patrons that would like to address us? Why you guys here? All your captive prisoner.
Thank you.
We will have a, we will have a public hearing on this, January 6th. It'll be in the circuit court. They'll not be here, they'll be upstairs in the circuit court. It'll be at 6 o'clock, and I think that's really about it.
Mr. Parker, your comments were very direct and to the point. So, we'll have another public hearing like Mike said, January 6th. See what happens.
Well, before we adjourn, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, everybody in the county, our road deputies, our sheriff's department, be safe while you're out there, please, our highway department. You guys are doing a good job. You haven't been to the test yet because the snow already hasn't fallen, but we'll appreciate your efforts in the future. And all the county employees, we appreciate your efforts. And though Debbie, you thought you were rid of us at the beginning of the month.
I know. Look at this. We really are done, Caroline.
I really, I appreciate all the work that you've done over the past years that I've worked with you. You've been here many hours after everybody else has gone home to do things, and I don't think people really appreciate that or understand that amount of hours that you put in for your job. You're very dedicated. You've been a great example to a lot of us. I thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, I got a question for the attorney. In that hearing on, when we have the next one on January 6th, can we, if people get up and start speaking about things other than what really pertain to the tax abatement, such as the wildlife and the noise and that stuff, flickering and all that, can we ask them, that really is not part of this meeting, that falls under another, and we, can we not hear that?
Well, I mean. Well, I mean, we should follow, follow preliminary procedure, so each person will get, will be designated through X amount of minutes. They can talk about whatever they want, but your response can simply be that doesn't pertain to what we're talking about here. But we really can't, at least when it's open to the public, I mean, they can start reading the encyclopedia if they want to.
I've researched that because of what happened last time, and what he says is correct, they can talk about whatever they want.
Okay.
But they, they've got three minutes or five minutes, whatever we determine, and that's it. And once their three minutes is up, that's it, they're not going to borrow time from somebody else, so you get three minutes and that's it.
All right.
I will also add too, I'm going to send this resolution down to be signed, and last time I missed getting two sets of minutes that you approved at the December 2nd meeting sign, so I'm going to send them down to get signed. I'm going to do that.
See if we can find your pen there, see if that works.
So Sheriff, you guys know that we're going to be in the council, in the circuit court. We'll talk about access in and out, and we'll talk afterwards.
We will have TV coming.
So just bring it on the camera. Did we record with your cell phone in the circuit court, right? For TV3? Square and mark. Well done.
I think Nabi's got one.
Nabi's got one.
His beard is growing longer as we're waiting.
He'll throw it over my shoulder so it's not.
He looks like Santa Claus.
It's a root man winkle.
Good.
Okay. You have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, we have a second.